Everybody and welcome to the Board of Selectments meeting for March 31st, 2015. Ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I'm still yours, Karen. I am going to entertain a motion to approve the expense warrant, expense warrant for 331, payroll warrant for 331, ratify the expense warrant for 317, ratify the expense warrant for 324, ratify the wire warrant for 317.
So moved on all five items, sir.
I will second that.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna pass over the select minutes, I haven't had a chance, I'm only halfway through. Announcements, Representative Goby's aide will be holding office hours at the Brookfield Town Hall, Senator, I'm sorry, keep thinking of her as a state rep, but she's still a rep, right? Senator, Senator Goby. Will be holding office hours at the Brookfield Town Hall on Tuesday, April 21st, from 2:00 to 3:00 PM, all are welcome. Anybody wish to address the board this evening?
You mean on public access?
On public access, yes.
Yeah.
If you want, if you want, Maureen.
I don't have any further comments, I gave you my comments, I hope that you guys were able to negotiate a good contract.
Did you want to address, I don't know what she's talking about?
Yeah. Well, no, I was thinking about what you were talking to me about, some complaints, as opposed to this, yeah. This is a good time to do it, tell you the truth, if you want.
Welcome in. If you could just state your name for our listening audience.
Maureen Leepa. So, I caught the tail end of the last meeting, my neighbor was here complaining about the snow removal. I wanted to approach about the issue at that residence or in general, the area, the parking situation. I think a lot of the problem with the snow removal is probably around the fact that there's just a lot of vehicles parked in that area, they're parked on a tight corner. He noted during his conversation that the parking is for his tenants.
Now, this is on Mr. Harmon, Rice Corner Road, okay.
So, my questions are, I've been noting this since 2013, we had a land dispute, there was a court hearing, he submitted an affidavit, he talked about remodeling a second and third floor unit, we approached the building inspector and the zoning enforcement officer because the town is taxing that house as a single-family residence, and to me, that's an illegal conversion of a single-family dwelling into a multifamily dwelling.
See, we don't know, you don't know if he has obtained all of the necessary permits yet to do the work?
Well, at the time, I have a letter from code enforcement talking about the fact that there weren't permits applied for, for any of the renovations, so according to Jeff Taylor at the time, he said, at the moment, the work in occupancy is illegal, we also have no idea if there's smoke fire, carbon monoxide protection sounding devices installed. We know that there's someone living in the attic, I don't know if there's separate grass, there doesn't look to be a separate fire escape.
So we have legitimate concerns for this residence?
Have you seen the emails that she's been sending for the past two weeks?
Yeah.
Two years, I've been sending emails.
Well, we're just talking recently.
Yeah, recently, yes.
And we responded to contact Mrs. Simeoni?
There's that, but I think in respect of just the parking, I was looking over the town bylaw, the town bylaw in, looks like, Chapter 10, Section 16, any person desiring to construct a driveway or accessway onto a public way shall make a written application to the highway superintendent. So, he said in the meeting, at the last meeting, that he had, it was lawn before, and now it's, he's made a wall, and he said there was gravel, I don't notice any gravel there, but he's constructed a new parking area. It's in a dangerous spot, it's for his tenant, I feel bad for the tenant because I feel like it's a matter of time that that person's gonna have their car hit because of the way people drive.
So my question, have you contacted Gary in regards to this?
I've tried to contact Gary, I mean, I contacted him in 2013, he told me at the time, in an email, that he couldn't take it up because the town wouldn't pay for it to support the zoning enforcement.
It's the attorney. Hey, Bill, we're gonna have to put you on hold, okay?
Just let him know, we'll call him back if we need him now.
So what we'll do is, we'll contact Gary through this office, is he still on vacation or did he come back?
You got it, thanks.
He's back, and I did already contact him, and because I asked him, we needed the executive session to handle this or not, but maybe he did, he said he's working on it now, he will let us know if he thinks it warrants an executive session, so he is working on it, that's what he told me, it was asked last week.
Was that Mr. Simeoni?
Yes.
Yeah, the June 25th, 2013 email says, "I do not have town's permission to pursue since this costs the town money." That was his response to dealing with that.
I remember dealing with the issue, I think it was something separate besides the parking.
I don't, you know, I've never complained about the parking, I didn't think it was really a huge deal to me, I don't go that way very often, so it's not my business, but when he came to talk about the snow plowing, I don't recall seeing seven foot tall, I just recall that the Brookfield Highway Department has done an outstanding job doing the plow work all winter long, they came down, they took down the snow banks, I know that they pushed snow banks into the field next to my house to get them off the road, control the drifting, I know that, you know, I don't know Herb personally, I've only met him one time, when I pulled into the town post office and there was a man lying unconscious, and an ambulance was called, and he was the first person to respond, I think he sprinted from Proudey Street up the road, and I know that, you know, in the last meeting, you mentioned a couple times, and you're probably right, that he's not the zoning enforcement officer, but he is that type of person that is ready to do, you know, to be there and effective, and I think the Highway Department is very effective, and I just, when I see those types of complaints, I just wanna make sure that, you know, there's a fair balance of the situation. I don't think that it's unfair to say back to the residents of 117 Rice Corner Road that you're parking all over the road, you're on both sides, you're on land that doesn't belong to you, they park on a raised septic system bed that's supposed to be vegetated cover, right now, there's just a mud sling.
So I'll deal with that through Karen with Gary on that end, and I do hear you on the Highway Department.
And I had taken a ride out last week.
I did as well.
On Rice Corner Road there, and I always thought where he is calling a parking lot, I consider that a town property, I don't even think it's his property.
Yeah, I don't know that I could park my car along the edge of my yard and claim it as a parking area.
And it is a dangerous area, a dangerous place to have this.
You know, it's been lucky so far, they frequently have their animals get loose, in fact, I think he mentioned that he keeps his phone number on the door just in case I come home to find the bull running around, and, you know, even charged, I think, a police car, you know, during the summer at one point, it's not uncommon, actually.
And I did see where you said that they are, there's all ruts, they are parking up there with the septic, I saw that also.
I have other supporting information, our town clerk noted to Jeff Taylor last year, May 20th, I believe, that a tenant that had just moved out informed them that Mark had converted the attic into an apartment, and that we have it as a one-family with four bedrooms, and the Board of Health has not issued a certificate of compliance regarding the septic system because of the, you know, there was all issues that were going on last year around the septic system installation, but because he's got that information, and he gave it to the building inspector, I think the town definitely needs to do some sort of action.
I will follow.
To bring the house into compliance.
Yeah, we will.
It's, you know, he may have people living there that are good friends of theirs, and they might not mind living there, but if there was ever a fire in that house, it could be a real tragedy if people were living in illegal apartments.
I agree with you.
It's, who's the owner to do it as well, because for insurance reasons, he could lose all insurance coverage, so, I mean, you would think it would be on himself to just take care of it, so, anyway.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate hearing from you on how the town decides to deal with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board this evening? Is the whole crowd, welcome. Evening, sir.
Based on hearing that, this, a highway superintendent, this is not a personal thing about this person, that person, what this is about with his conduct and his behavior is professionalism and the way he treats the residents of our towns, I'm not gonna get into that stuff she just talked about, we're talking about the way he conducts himself in this town, the way he goes after people, the way he handles himself personally with people, we cannot tolerate that and endure that in this town. And I've talked to a lot of people this week, and your first question, and the only question they had, to me, is, why is this guy still employed by our town? So, that's the question here tonight, dealing with this, is the professionalism in the conduct of our town employees, the way they treat us, if someone's doing something right or wrong, fine, go through the proper channels, but we can't have this yelling and swearing and going psycho with our town residents, and it's gotta be brought to a head, and, you know, something has to be dealt with by you three, because the other boards in the past have not done it, so, I just, I just hope when we go on from here that we get some kind of professional and some kind of understanding between what he's supposed to be doing and how he's gonna conduct himself with the rest of us residents, and I think should be looked into and dealt with.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to address the board this evening?
Item number one, 6:00 PM public hearing, I want to entertain a motion to enter into the cable TV license renewal public.
So moved, sir.
I'll second that.
And that'll be at 6:12 PM. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Selectmen of the town of Brookfield is the cable television licensing issuing authority for the town, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, March 31st, 2015, at 6:00 PM in the bankroom at the Town Hall, 6 Central Street, Brookfield, Mass., 01506, pursuant to 207 CMR 3.05, applicable cable television renewal license laws, regulations, or requirements regarding the renewal of the cable television license of Charter Communication Entertainment, ILLC. And we are here for said hearing. Mr. Thomo did an excellent job negotiating this contract, this is the first time I'm seeing the contract.
We, I met with Mr. Solomon a number of times, and with the assistance of Jim Sniffin, he was really, he did a really good job with giving us the technical aspect of it, and I wanna commend you for that, Jim, thank you. Mr. Solomon knows his stuff, I thought he did great, just to give you a quick rundown, the last contract we had for 10 years, I believe the town received $50,000 overall. Right now, with this new contract, if we sign it for this 10-year contract, we are going to get $50,000 after 90 days after signing it, $50,000 after five years, and a certain percentage of their gross revenues going up to possibly 5%, which in effect could conceivably be over half a million dollars to the public educational government support channel, over half a million dollars. So, I think we did a great job with the, Jim, if you could, could you explain the technical aspect as far as the new cables and the wiring and the capabilities that we're gonna be able to do? So with this new equipment, we are going to be able to do live feeds from this location, the elementary school, and the new police station. What else you got?
Would you want me to pick up?
Pick up where the...
I wouldn't have think he just stole your thunder.
No, 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 there's so much more, like a new flow video return we're getting, transmitters and...
Just backing up, just backing up a little bit, they got half of the information right, but it's not big's fault, that's okay. The first contract was 50,000, and it was also $5,000 a month, so it actually comes out at the end, I'm sorry, $5,000 a year, gee, I almost screwed that up, and at the end of that contract, it was roughly about 100,000.
Was it that much, yeah?
Back then.
Stand corrected on that one.
With the new contract, yes, it's gonna be in the vicinity of about a half a million that we're gonna be able to do. Now, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna be able to do live feeds at the elementary school for town meetings, and anything else that's going on at the school, we'll also be able to do live feeds here at the Town Hall, so we can do Board of Selectmen meetings and any other kind of meetings that we can. We're also gonna be able to do live from the new police station that I've been wanting to do for the police station, fire department, and the EMS, God forbid if we ever have an emergency, the chief will be able to go right in and send out an emergency information that he needs to do, and later on, you know, you and I can discuss on how we're gonna do that, access codes and all that stuff. That won't happen until the PD is built, of course, however, we still got plenty of time to kinda like tweak the information. Right now, we're actually filming on a HD digital system, but we're set up for an analog system that goes out to the public. With the new contract, we're gonna have new modulators come in, so we're gonna be able to send a digital signal, higher quality audio and video. We're also gonna be able to put new equipment in the studio to do live at the studio, and at the school, of course, and also the bulletin board, it's running PowerPoint, it works, it's fine, however, the new system can now take over and do that. We're talking about a lot of equipment that's kinda techy that's going in, but the biggest thing that we're gonna be able to do is we potentially don't have to be at the studio to make changes and/or updates, because it's all web-based, so we can actually be from our homes, need, if need be. An example, if we have a snowstorm and we need to put emergency information on there, we could, one of us can just sign into the system, if we have internet access, of course, and password, username, and update from there, and the chief's gonna also be able to do that too, once it's all said and done. So there's a lot of equipment that's gonna be coming in, again, it's a lot of techy stuff, but it's gonna open up a lot of avenues for us, and as a matter of fact, this morning, I spent three hours talking with the sales rep that we're gonna get the equipment from, because I actually have some more ideas that we're gonna do, we're gonna be able to do, one of which is the Apple Country Fair I've been wanting to do live, we're gonna be able to do that. Again, all this sounds great, but it's gonna take time to do, it's, we need to get the equipment in first, get it up and running, so we can get trained on it, and then be on it kinda like on our own, and then everything will start falling into place. So we'll be looking for a lot of volunteers too, if you wanna come in and do anything, doesn't really matter, could even be working at the studio. So a lot of things are gonna happen within, I would say, by the end of this year anyways, and then we're gonna move on after that, sponsorships and underwriting and all that too to go with it, so.
Does anybody have any questions for the gentleman?
When I first reviewed the contract, from the old contract to the new contract, it looked like there was language in there that Charter could pass the cost, the equipment that you just mentioned, back onto the customers. Is that still true?
I haven't looked at the contract, so...
I haven't read the new contract yet, because I just got it this afternoon, I haven't went through that yet, so I can't answer that, I don't know yet this time.
Because it is 40-something pages long.
Did you see the new contract?
It would've been in the public access section, I believe.
Yeah.
I'd have to look at my notes that I sent you guys.
When I talked to the lawyer yesterday, he was kinda like finalizing it, and then he was gonna send it out, so...
I'm curious.
That wasn't verbalized to us though, I thought he was passing that on to us.
Can you take note of that?
Yeah, that would probably be something kinda quietly...
We would, yeah, that would be very upsetting.
We'd have to look at that.
Nick, are you gonna follow up on that, or?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we can get him right now.
This is the hearing.
My other question is, were you able to negotiate anything for a senior citizen?
We couldn't, we tried.
I tried.
We tried.
I tried, that was one of the, one of the other things that was on my wish list, I couldn't get it.
They just don't do it anywhere.
Couldn't do it, but I put it out there anyways, plus there was other things too that I couldn't get.
Mr. Solomon, it's Nick Thomo, we're at the meeting, and we have one question.
Good, no, thanks for calling, hi folks.
Is this good like this?
Yep.
Maureen, again, it was, could they pass the equipment cost back onto the town?
Yeah, onto the residents.
Hold on, hold on, hold, hold. Say it again?
It sounded... Here's what the law allows, that they can put on a bill that the, what that cost is for their local franchise requirements, and they can put it on the bill and charge their subscribers. Now, whether or not, over a 10-year period, that means that your subscribers are gonna pay more, is not always clear. Let me give you an example. In the town of Amherst, let's say there was, there was a cable bill of $47.50, and on that bill it said $2.50 was because of what the town required in the license, so there was quoted a franchise fee of $2.50, and there was $47.50, that was a bill, let's say, for basic and expanded basis. So then, they could say, in effect, if you live in Amherst, the company could say, hey, look at the town's cost, $2.50. Now, in the towns of Deerfield, Sunderland, and Wakeley, which then had licenses which had no compensation for, you know, the use of the right of way, guess how much the cable company charged their customers in those towns?
How much?
$50. So, they charged the same amount, it's just that in one town, on the bill, they started to say, we're blaming the town. I mean, they pay the president of the corporation, let's say you pay him $10 million, they could go to the bill, like, so much is going to pay the president of the corporation, so that there's no guarantee over 10 years, particularly with changing nature of competition, that just because they say on the bill, that's a local franchise requirement, that your subscribers are paying anymore. So let me just give two quick examples. If you were to say to them, okay, if we don't get anything from you, will you guarantee us that our rates will be lower than someone else, or that, you know, you'll do this or that at rates, so I'd say, no, we can't guarantee you that. Or another way to look at it, two ways, I think it's important, let's say there's no public way, and let's say the cable company, one came along, and they wanted to put poles and conduits on property, and they, and they came up to you, Nick, and they said, Nick, we're a cable company, we like to provide TV service to people in the area, in the town, we'd like to put poles and conduit on your property, and you'd say, well, I don't really want poles and conduits on my property, if you're gonna do it, I want it to be paid. They'd say, Nick, Nick, if you charge us, we're just gonna have to pass that through to our subscribers. Now, as a property owner, each one of the members of Board of Selectmen would say, hey, what you charge your customers, your customers is up to you, but I can't give you my property for free, because it's valuable, I have a family, I have kids, I wanna leave it to them, why would I want poles and conduits here and not get compensated? So that no one here, with the cable company, put those on their own home property. Now you're elected selectman, and you're charged of the public property, and the fiduciary responsibility of taking care of the public trust. Now the same company comes along and says, hey, you know what, we're gonna charge, we may charge our customers more if you charge us to be on your property, but why would your answer be any different than it was for your own home? I mean, some folks think government should be run like a business, well, government should be run like a business, why would you give it away when it's your taxpayers' roads that they bought, maintained, leased, insured, cleaned, repaired, they're in your road, and they're earning money. So, you know, why would you give it away when you wanna do your own, that seems to be contrary to what you do for yourself? And finally, if you had everyone around the table who could give them services, you had WB Mason, and their lawyers, and there are people who rent them offices for custom service or for equipment, everyone around the table, and they said to everyone, hey, we can't promise you will lower cable rates, but would you charge us less? Every one at the table would say, no. Would the town be the only one who's saying, oh, there's a chance you might charge your customers less, okay, then they'll give us nothing, you'd be the only one at the table, it would be silly. So, in the cable world, it's considered a fool's errand, there's no, there's no promise or guarantee that if you charge them less, they would charge less, just like when you own a business, you have a business and you charge a certain rate, some of the folks here might be a business. Now, let's say your energy costs go up, or your rent goes up, you can't necessarily pass that on, but the same thing here, at the end of the day, they can pretend on the bill, or they can say they're passing through, but at the end of the day, over 10 years, whether they truly, what they charge will be based upon what they think they can get in the market, just like you don't just, you don't get a rate, you don't get an increase from your landlord, you're their landlord.
All right, Bill, I think, Bill, I think, I think the question was answered by the resident, so, yeah. Hold on a second, I wanna make sure there aren't any other questions here, is there any other questions, Maureen, or anyone else?
The only other thing I could think of, from the old contract to the new contract, it looked like Charter would assess an extra charge to customers that have to go more than 150 feet from the trunk to their house, it used to be 250 feet, and I was wondering if that's acceptable to the town, considering that most of us are rural.
Well, Bill, did you hear that?
Is this on the houses or the schools?
To the house.
Houses.
The houses, the residents.
They always have, that's the same standard installation you have now, does that consider the standard installation?
Standard?
And I think what I did, I think you now have, I think you now have, you've got underground distance then, right?
Yes.
I think now you don't have any underground distance, so I was able to get you, right now, they could charge you the whole thing, but I was able to get you a standard underground installation, in addition to keep your, keeping your existing aerial standard installation, so I was able to get you something better.
Is she correct that the footage went from 250 to 150?
Is it 150 on aerial?
Yeah.
It's 150 on the aerial, yes.
Well, I don't have the license before me now, my understanding was it was the same.
Okay.
If you want, what you might do is, if you have the existing license there, you're looking at the existing one, since it's 250.
I'm looking at this one right now, at the new one that we have, not the old one.
No, the old one, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have the old one.
Why did you do this? Well, if you, if you want, voted, subject to the chair resolving the distance law with the assistance of counsel.
Yeah, I'm not entertaining an argument tonight, I didn't even look at this.
If you vote with, if the existing license is 250, voted at 250, voted at 250, subject to the further review by the chair with assistance of counsel, and I'll take a look. My understanding was it kept the same, but it might be wrong.
Okay, we'll check it out, Mr. Solomon. Listen, I think we're good for now, if I need you, I'll give you a quick, I'll give you a quick call.
Call me back, you know, call me back, it's fine, I'm here, thank you.
You got it.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Any other questions? Any other comments?
Nope. Okay, so we don't wanna sign this now?
I personally don't wanna sign this.
I would like to go over myself, just came in.
So I will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion, hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
Item number three, appointment of police officers, we've been presented with Ms. Allen and Mr. Simeoni, or Simino, I'm sorry.
Gary?
What's that?
Gary?
Yeah, Gary.
No, that's, it's Simeon, isn't it? It's not Simeon.
How do you spell it?
S-I-M-O-N-E-U.
It's not Simeon. Gary's is different from that.
I can't see it.
Semino?
Semino. Semino, is it?
Semino.
I had his daughter for driver's ed, and I'm hoping I'll have Ms. Allen's children for driver's ed as well. Welcome, ma'am. Ms. Allen has been a police officer and dispatcher for several area departments since 2000. Currently a part-time officer with the Hardwick Police Department and a full-time dispatcher for the Western Police Department. She has an associate's degree in criminal justice from Holyoke Community College. And Mr. Semino has, is currently a part-time officer with the Wales Department, Police Department, and a current owner of Zoot's Dry Clean. Chief.
Well, I had asked for three. I'm putting on two right now. I believe I'm gonna move forward with the third one. I just haven't completed his background check, so I'm gonna come back at the next meeting. Like I said, Serenity's been involved in law enforcement in numerous communities, including Holland, Brimfield, Warren, in the capacity of both a dispatcher and a police officer. Hardwick gave a re-review. She works really well with the community, and I think she's gonna be a good asset for the Police Department. Rick is fairly new into law enforcement. He had a career in the business sector. And he's just recently, in 2013, gone through the Reserve Academy and got his first policing job in the town of Wales, where he's excelling, and he wants to expand his, his knowledge of police work.
Good.
So, unfortunately, he's in Rhode Island and not able to come up here tonight on business. But when I bring the other gentleman forward, I'll also bring Rick to introduce himself. So, Mr. Serenity, I don't know if you wanna say anything?
Welcome, Serenity.
You're welcome.
I'm just glad we're able to be out here.
Oh, yeah. You'll have fun. It's fun. It's all right.
Any questions?
No, I think she's well-qualified. She's well-experienced. I'm okay with it.
Yes.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to appoint both individuals as a sheriff officers.
So moved.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? There are none all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you.
Welcome to Brooklyn.
Welcome to Brooklyn. Thank you.
Chief, are you staying? Or, we had that discussion. We're good. You're good with what we planned?
Yeah, I can stay, and I think you're a couple of hours ahead of the rest.
Okay, here's to the names, okay. Item number four, Mr. Simpson, PSBC. I had the opportunity to sit on last night's meeting. Mr. Simpson, have you briefed the other two selectmen on what happened last night?
Yes.
Before you get really in-depth in this, I would ask that we table this until our next meeting. From what I'm hearing, you have another meeting Wednesday night, that the OPM's gonna actually come back with harder numbers, as opposed to pie-in-the-sky numbers. Because right now, I'm gonna tell you I'm gonna vote no.
Well, listen to what he has to say first.
That's why I asked him, that's why, Nick, Nick, easy. That's why I asked if he's briefed you guys.
Well, he's called me about it, but I still wanna hear what he has to say, so we can talk about it.
Yeah, I've talked to him also.
What was that? Ms. Coughlin? Did you have an issue? Did you want to come to the table, or? Thank you for refraining. Mr. Simpson?
What's going on, though? Anyways, let's start with you again.
Just first to, just to, tabling is an option. We do have a meeting Wednesday. We won't have anything, we can't have a concrete number until we actually sign the contract, or we can't get anything firm in writing from the general contractor in terms of what work change orders we can apply and be accepted. So, we can have, new numbers that we have will be, still be approximate. We can't guarantee. Just in terms of what numbers we will be able to reveal in the next week. Is that all that?
Yeah.
Okay. But what I'd like to present to you is, I've got a copy for each of you here. There's three things in each packet, one for each of you.
So it was passed out last night?
Uh, yes, but this is, this actually has the contract document as well, and the revised budget.
And the recommendation from the architect?
And the recommendation from the architect. So, what you have in front of you is, the first thing is the letter of recommendation from the architect stating that he recommends that we approve the contract for 1.256 million for the construction of the police station. That's the low bid that came in. And I have the eleven bidders that bid on the project are listed on page three of the document. With P&amp;P Construction being the low bid, low certified bid for the general contract. And that contract includes all the sub-bidders as well. So it includes the five hundred and fifty thousand, something thousand for the subcontractors. And it's the architect and the owner's project manager's recommendation that we accept the contract. We don't have many other options in terms of how we move forward with this. But that is their recommendation. The second piece of paper not stapled is the revised budget, which includes all of the amounts that we have available based on our, you know, current estimates. And the hardest number on there is the contractor bid at the top, which is the 1.256 million. And you can see the rest of the line items there. They've been fluctuating, and we've modified them to adapt to the budget that we have. The challenging item in there, which I've talked to all of you about, is the site work. We've brought that down. We had a high estimate originally of 200,000. We were hoping there was a lot of extra room in there. But with this revision, we've removed the carport completely, so we won't be building or retaining wall. We won't be hiring Tantasca to build the carport, because we can't afford it. It could be a project for Tantasca down the road, but it's out of the budget now, and we're definitely not putting a second. The alternate in the construction bid was for the second bay of the Sally Port, and that is all, the architect recommends that we reject that as well due to budget constraints and the construction amount came in higher than anticipated. We were anticipating a one to 1.1 million, and it came in at 1.256, which was substantially higher.
So you got quarter of a million dollars over budget?
In the construction line.
That's not good.
Oh, I, I agree. I'd much rather be presenting a one million dollar of construction amount. But the bids on the streets are what they are.
Well, it is what it is, but...
Mr. Chafee was at the meeting last night. He slept on it, and he actually sent an email. I don't know if you guys got it?
No, I saw it.
That he has major concerns with 100,000 on that. There's a discussion that we're talking no landscaping outside.
No furniture.
Literally no furniture.
Well, we have 30,000 in contingency, which we do have potential allocations for furniture.
Now, this is the same architect that said the bids were gonna be really low, 'cause I heard him say that on TV. When I sent out the bids, right before the bids would come out, he goes, they guarantee, I will guarantee they will be low. That's what he said.
I can't.
Uh, you were there?
You can recall this question.
Absolutely. I will not forget that.
The discussion last night is if it went out to bid again, which is an option. Obviously, would take more time.
It'd take approximately three months, I believe.
Through, through history, it's probably, even with the same plan, it's gonna come back higher than what it's at now.
Well, yeah, we can, we can change the plans. I mean, bidding at exactly the same doesn't...
You're not gonna save anything. Nothing's gonna change.
No. All we lose is time and money if we do that. But if we change the plans, we lose three months, and we get a lesser building, and we're, you know, we cut it as tight as we felt was appropriate.
There was also a comment by the OPM last night that even if we reduce the size, it would still come in at the same price.
I don't believe that at all.
Well, there's not a lot of size reductions that...
And he based that on a discussion with the contractor with the lowest bid.
Yeah, it's, it's a...
So personally...
So you guys were still, 200,000 over budget, but you still went out the bid, basically?
What's this? No, that was the KVA estimate. That's, that has a lot of stuff in it that's not in the final bid documents. So they had assumed more use of concrete. They'd assumed several other things that was not in the final bid.
So am I correct in what I heard that he's coming back with harder numbers Wednesday?
If, if that's the request of the board, we can, but there's still gonna be estimates. And, you know, his estimate is, the OPM's estimate was we could take 30,000 to 50,000 out with negotiations of work change orders with the general contractor once we get started. And there are a couple other places we can cut as well.
I wanna say something, Mr. Chairman. We had Mr. Simpson with Kermit here, I think in August or September. And we gave him direction from this board that we wanted the building to come in at 1, 1.1. That was our directive to them.
Well, that was our desire.
Well, that's, we told them what we want. And you're coming back with this? Not good. Unacceptable.
Well, your options are to sign the contract.
Not happening.
Okay. Then what would you like us to do?
Redesign. I'm not asking the people to spend more of our money, their money.
We're proposing a budget of 1.6.
It doesn't look like it's gonna happen. Can he guarantee that? Everything. Soup to nuts. Landscaping, furniture, the whole ball of wax.
The architect and the OPM, we can get the building completed, full occupancy, furniture, and...
And he will guarantee that?
I can ask him if he will guarantee it, but I don't think...
I don't either. I don't.
Unknowns are unknown.
That's what I'm saying. So, what I think this board should let them know is that they gotta start at square one again. This is not gonna happen.
It was a three-to-two vote to present this to the selectmen.
I know it was. So you had some people against this, actually.
Yes.
It wasn't unanimous.
And one abstained.
Yeah. So I, this is not flying by me. I do not, I don't like this at all.
How would you like us to proceed?
I want them to redesign. Start over again.
Well, that's...
You guys were given explicit instruction on what we wanted, on what the town wanted. They didn't even want 1.6. Town wanted, they, I think that passed by like three votes.
I would love to be presenting you a 1.3 million dollar police station.
Well, go back and do it again, then. I don't know what to say, because I'm not accepting this. I'm not accepting this at all. I think they should go, start over again with the architect.
If you vote on this, if you were to approve this contract, I believe we can get you a police station built. If you reject it, I don't know how we're gonna get a police station built.
What's the time limit? Like, there was a number last night? We have a certain amount of time to...
We have 30 days, but we can extend it. Every day we delay.
So, Mr. Thomo, that's why I wanna see harder numbers?
They're not gonna change that much.
Yeah, we're not gonna see...
You're not gonna save 200,000 dollars?
Yeah, we're not gonna save.
And you're gonna come before the town to ask for more money?
The town is not gonna...
I am not gonna do that.
I was very clear last night in my statement.
I'm curious about where you think we're gonna be asking for more money.
Well, I don't think you're over budget by 200,000 plus.
Where, where, where is the 200,000 plus? The total budget on that is what?
1.6.
Correct.
What is, does it, what does it include?
It includes everything.
Landscaping, furniture?
Yes.
Well, the landscaping...
Really?
Our plan was...
Oh, well, hey, maybe I'm wrong. I don't know.
No, the landscaping is only what we can get out of 100,000.
Plus what we can pull out of the general, which we're thinking is 30,000 to 50,000 dollars. Plus, there's a couple other avenues we can cut.
Plus...
So we can very likely get up to 150,000 to 160,000 for the site work.
I see this, the way this is going, Mr. Simpson, going about 200 over the...
I can see it.
I see this at a 1.8.
I respectfully disagree.
I think it's too darn close to call right now.
I think it's too close.
Well, this is the contract that we have to sign.
I'm not gonna sign it.
If you can make a motion now and vote to not sign it, then...
I'll make a motion not to sign this at this time.
I would, not entertain a motion and table it until that discussion Wednesday.
But I don't, I don't know what new information I do.
Nothing's gonna change there.
I'm trying to stay optimistic here.
Nothing's gonna change, Mr. Chairman.
But there's, I don't know.
Why, what do you, what do you wanna wait for?
We had the discussion as well. Did you find out if Tantasca could get involved and we could possibly...
It's still just nipping around the edges.
Yeah.
You know? I mean, they could come in at the very end, do a little bit of the trim work.
Well, no, I'm not talking nipping at the edges. I'm talking, the town of Brookfield with the OPM becomes a G city.
That is a much more complicated and challenging thing, because dealing with all the subcontractors, it's, there are legal issues.
You mentioned that you're gonna check in with the OPM to see if...
I talked to the OPM and the architect about that today.
It's possible.
Both of them say that the only thing we can really do is just the, like, the last finishing touches. And other than that...
They only wanna do the last finishing touches, or we can do it, they don't wanna do it?
Those are two, uh, so what's the first question?
Can we involve Tantasca in building a police station? From start to finish? And the town become the GM?
I do not recommend that.
I don't either.
But that's not the question. I'm trying to look at every option.
I know, but it doesn't sound plausible to me.
Yeah, I think that...
I mean, we have a contract, the lease is running out in August.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's, if you're concerned about time...
I'm concerned about the cost right now.
And well, then the cost is in front of you.
Yeah, and I don't like it.
I don't know what you're looking for, that you expect to change.
We told, we were explicit.
You told us that you wanted 1.3.
We wanted, we told you to go back, we wanted, we told you to go back and tell your committee we wanted 1, 1 million or 1.1 for the building. And that's what we told you.
And that's what we wanted.
And that, but did that happen? Did you go back and tell your committee that?
We were budgeting, the architect's contract, amount that we're paying the architect is based on a 1 million dollar construction budget. He's, the typical architect's rate, 7% of construction cost estimated. Where he's getting 7% of the 1 million dollars. He's not getting additional money for additional work.
I think he's gotta go back and redesign this building. It's, it's not gonna go down.
Do you wanna have a joint? I don't know what's gonna...
Posture, posture a little tight on this.
Does he have to redesign?
But, but what can we pull out, Nick?
Make it smaller. Pull out the, pull out the lockers. The locker was huge.
We can still do that.
Not enough to make up this deficit?
No, you pull out lockers, you save 5,000 dollars.
Ten grand, fifteen, what?
Depends, we still pull lockers.
'Cause you're really, I think with this, you're really cutting this close. You could very easily even go over the 1.3.
We have 30,000 in contingency. The architect is typically sees 1, 1% or less in work change orders.
This architect has said many times, that I found to be untrue, many things that I found to be untrue. Specifically, that the bids were gonna be lower. So whatever he says, I really, I'll take with a grain of salt.
Okay. So you would not like to accept his recommendation?
Absolutely not.
Yeah, I think we should.
They can recommend, I'm not.
Do you wanna have a joint meeting?
I don't know what that would gain us. Yes. What we have in front of you is the committee's recommendation with a three...
With a three-to-one vote. Not overwhelming, not unanimous, barely got by.
But, you know, I think this is an opportunity for us to move forward and get the station built. If we, if you, if your committee does not approve that, then we don't, I don't know how we're moving forward.
Cutting costs too tight.
It's too close right now. I'd like to see harder numbers. And I'm gonna stand for a moment.
Can you please tell me what you would like? I don't know how...
That's the only, I heard that he's coming back with harder numbers, 'cause I had to meet with the advisory committee, so I didn't hear that conversation.
But you really think they're gonna be that much different?
I'm trying to be optimistic.
I know, but what do you, it's time to make a decision, though.
That there might be some thought in the next week that could do something. There might be a...
From this architect?
No, the OPM, 'cause he's having the conversations with the G city.
Well, we can't get anything in writing from the G city.
We know that, but he could have the conversations that could bring us down.
And he said 30,000 to 50,000 dollars is what he's having in conversation so far.
So far.
And if that's really what, in reality, what we're gonna be looking for.
I'm not happy with this at all.
So do you just wanna throw the baby out with the bathwater, Mr. Thomo?
Well, I'm saying, let's go, let's start over again. The architect has to redesign this place.
What I'm presenting to you is, you can make a choice, and we can move forward and get the station built. And I believe we can get everything done. I believe we can get the site work complete in that budget.
I don't.
A highway department doesn't think so.
Nope, absolutely not.
But we're planning on...
And people, and people on your committee don't think so either, apparently, if they voted against it.
Yeah.
So you got almost 50% of your committee saying it ain't, it's not gonna work.
Well, we're saying it's tight. We know it's tight.
So, Mr. Thomo, do you wanna come back at this, at the next meeting after their Wednesday meeting, or you just wanna downright reject?
I, I'm not voting for this.
I don't know what we're gonna do about this police station.
I can't see it going on for the design again, 'cause that's gonna set us back.
I, I think if you vote on this, vote in the negative on accepting this contract, I do not see how this project's gonna move forward. And I'm saying that right now, I, as the chair of the committee, if this board does not accept this contract, I do not know how we're gonna get the police station built.
That's why I don't wanna kill it right now, and I wanna...
Listen.
And it's your choice.
They, they had, they had a charge. The committee, that committee had a charge, and they failed in that charge, basically. That's what you're saying. You failed in your charge.
I'm saying we have in front of you a contract you can sign.
With this architect, who I'm not very fond of.
I understand that.
Who did not come through many times, who has led us down the wrong path. Now, would you want us to put everything in this basket with this individual? I can't. I'm sorry, I can't.
So again, do you wanna make a motion to reject it, or do you wanna wait till next week?
I don't, I don't think, why, we have to wait. It's nothing, nothing's gonna change. And you wanna go before the people and ask for another quarter of a million dollars?
No, why? And, and any delays, is, if it's rejected, a redesign, there's not much we can cut out of this building. We're gonna end up on the street again with...
Make a different building. Do a different design.
We can change the rooms around. We still have the same needs for a police station.
Make it smaller. Change it. Change, something's gotta change.
Tell me what we can change, Nick.
The size. I just did. Cut off 1,000 feet. It's 46, make it 3600.
We're going in circles again. So, so do we wanna outright reject it, or do we want-
This particular contract, I'm not voting for.
But do we wanna readdress it after their meeting on Wednesday, or do we wanna outright reject it?
I would, I would like to, um, talk some more about it after they have their meeting on Wednesday.
So, we have enough time to reschedule another discussion at our next meeting, after yours?
Which next meeting?
Two weeks from tonight.
Fourteenth?
So if you're, if you're meeting next week, we would meet the week after.
Okay.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
I'll put you on the agenda for that. You okay with that, Mr. Thummel?
I'll be here. I'll be in Florida.
Are we good with that, Mr. Thompson?
Yes. Now, when are you, when are you gonna be available again?
Wednesday night.
Tomorrow night?
No, like, a week from tomorrow.
That is on, on the eighth.
That's when I'm meeting.
Okay, what time you meeting?
6:30.
6:30. Should we maybe, if two of us, are you gonna attend it?
I possibly might.
So if two of us-
We might have to send them, I might, I might be there too, but with them, we might have to schedule a meeting.
We might have to schedule if the three of us are gonna be there.
Either that, or we, well, it'd probably be better to schedule it. All right, but, put your minds around it, we're gonna be, we have 48 hours to post it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, today's the 31st, so we got-
Thank you, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you.
Item number five, M I I A, Maya, new insurance rates, uh, the committee has brought forth, uh, increases of 4.97. Um, I'm going to entertain a motion to accept on their recommendation with a caveat that the teachers' unions, both unions approve of said contract.
You want that caveat in there, sir?
Yes.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number six, budget discussion. Karen and myself met with the advisory committee last night. The two biggest issues that came out were to put the septic increase on an article as well as the, um, town hall improvement for the bathroom renovation. So instead of incorporating it to the budget, to make the mark.
It'll be a line item.
No, an article.
An article.
An article, I mean, I'm sorry.
We good with that?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Setting meeting dates? When's it, when are we scheduled to?
Just tonight.
Just tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, let's get in.
All right, so 14th, 28th of April? Uh, town elections, the 5th. Do we wanna put them right under fire? Actually, yeah. So we'll do 12th and 26th of May?
You had me. One second. You said the 28th?
April 14th, April 28th.
Okay, and then we wanna go?
May 12th and May 26th.
Yeah, May 12th is good.
And we'll keep that for now until we have a new selection on board. That'll-
Okay.
We good? All right, so entertain a motion to approve those four dates?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Annual town meeting date, like to set that. Um, I really wanted to do that with our bylaw. We're speaking with people. It's probably not plausible.
No, I don't think it is.
Um, we've been doing it the first Friday of June, haven't we?
Um, no, let me look at the calendar. No, I think we've gone into the second, around the 12th.
I thought last one was the 6th of last year, June 6th. I don't have this in my-
I know, I know one time we did, we were early, and I know another time, I think we went in war for the second week.
You don't have a bylaw, what it says on that?
The bylaw is the first Friday after the town-
Yeah, first Friday after town meeting.
At town election.
We can't have that, though, huh?
That would be May, May 8th.
Yeah, we don't have any figures yet.
So I'm gonna recommend, um, June 5th. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that.
At 6:30 P.M.?
Yep.
For the, you have the special?
The special will be at 6:00 P.M.
Oh, you want the special?
Well, you wanna do 6:30 and then 7?
No, we do 6:30 for the special, for the specials.
And 7 for the-
And 7 for the annual.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, bids for the town report, went out to bid three companies, Country Press of $990.50 was a low bid. I'll entertain a motion to award said bid.
So moved.
I will second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, ratifying mass DOT reimbursement contracts. We've been awarded $24,981. Needed to be signed. I signed that on the 25th. I'll entertain a motion to ratify said signature.
So ratifying.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Appointment, uh, the fire chief is requesting an appointment of Mr. Hayman of 299 Cedar Street, Fistale, Mass. As a, uh, what do we consider him? Mr. Chafee, would he be just a firefighter?
I'm sorry, I need to-
To the fire department? He's just, he's just asking to appoint Mr. Hayman to the fire department. He'd be classified as a firefighter or auxiliary?
Auxiliary, yes.
Entertain a motion to, uh, accept him as a, appoint him as an auxiliary firefighter?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have to, I noticed he's from Sturbridge.
Yep.
Isn't that kinda strange, we're appointing, uh, cause I noticed that we have some other out of towns too.
We do. It's just a desire to serve. Some towns don't have room and-
Yeah, and they don't have openings anywhere.
It was just a question.
Yeah, I welcome it. He's got a pretty good job.
Absolutely.
All right.
We good? We took the vote, right?
No, we have to.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Do it again. Uh, item 12, resignation. Unfortunately, Mr. Kuchar is, uh, resigning from the common and mall committee. I will accept with regret said resignation. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. With regrets. That's too bad that he's gonna be-
He's a good man.
I know.
Letter of, uh, thank you. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item number 13, special permits. Entertain a motion to accept the Northern Bass Alliance Quayborg, number vehicle's 12 on, where can I even find it? Vent date, 10/4/15. Special use for Northern Bass Alliance to 8/15, 15 vehicles.
It's been off this year.
So both of those? Entertain said motion?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Item 14, the advisory committee voted to approve the deficit spending of $40,000 for the snow and ice. Entertain said motion through the board of selectmen.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, other, the, um, keypad has been installed and programmed with a code. The contract needs to be signed with contact phone numbers. The initial call, uh, if activated, will go right to dispatch, so we don't have to put them as a, as a, uh, number. Um, chief, is the chief still in the room, do you believe?
No, he left.
Um, I believe he recommended that we use the, uh, police department as a second, as a first.
Okay.
Um, the chairman of the board, whoever that happens to be, as a second, and then the town clerk as a third.
Excellent.
Okay.
So I'll entertain a motion to sign?
So moved.
So, I will second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. This requires one signature. Uh, entertain a motion to approve the automated business solution maintenance agreement for the copier for $435.
So moved, sir.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor? All right. Correspondence, we have two correspondents. Um, there's three? Oh, there is three, I'm sorry. Um, it's not, uh, far and few that handwritten letter. Um, it's very hard to read and I will actually kill it, but this individual, I believe it's Mr. Zaleski?
Yeah, Zaleski.
Is, um, basically, um, complimenting Captain, well, it's Chief, I believe, Martell, Mr. White, and Mr. Kumtose for, uh, responding to his 911 call efficiently and effectively, and, uh, very responsible. It's nice to hear things like that, so thank you, gentlemen. Um, Ms. LaFleur has sent a letter to the board of selectmen dated on 3/25 commending not only the highway department, but Mr. Chafee, um, commenting that he is an asset to the town, not only through the highway department, but his EMS abilities and being able to be a first responder on many, many incidents. Very nice to hear, and I would commend that as well. I not only see it, but I hear it. Thank you, Herb.
Yes. I, I've had a few couple calls this week from residents. They've told me the same thing.
Um, and correspondence from Mr. Heller. Uh, he thought that given that you, i.e. the selectmen, voted that this product, which was, um, what are we calling it?
Glycophytes?
Yeah.
Uh, to be used in industrial strength in Brookfield and right next to wherever you might be interested in reading it to, he provided an article, given this new information from a very credible source, perhaps you'd reconsider your vote. Popular weed killer is probably carcinogenic. Uh, this article is extremely hard to read. There's just double type everywhere, so, you know, so unfortunately, I can't read it. Um, it just basically reiterates what Mr. Heller's been saying for a couple years. We have contacted Deep Mass DOT. They basically said if we don't do it, they're not gonna do anything.
All right.
Are we changing our position?
No, no, absolutely not. I don't want to.
All right. Um, any other items on the agenda? Seven o'clock, executive session. Uh, Mr. Chafee, do you wish to, before we entertain a motion to enter into that, do you wish to go into executive session for that, or do you wish to remain in open?
Let's get it done.
Open?
Yep, that's fine.
Mr. Thummel, you wanted to contact town council, so I will let you lead the conversation.
Well, they, uh-
Here's, you wanna have a seat, Mr. Chafee?
Thank you, sir.
Do you have a copy of that? I thought I had a copy of that right there.
This is the full one. I don't know what's in it.
Let me see that one. I think that's what I'm looking at, looking for.
Is that what you're looking for?
I think so, yeah.
I just-
Is that from Michelle?
Yeah, I just copied all of it here.
Oh, that's not all of it?
No, that's not all of it. That's just some things that I have.
Look under that first paper, my name's there.
Yes, that's from you.
Oh.
Yeah, right there.
Well, I don't know if we should be reading anything from the attorney at this point, though, Mr.-
I don't think we need to either.
No.
This is basically, you wanted to table it until the next meeting, so.
Well, not to read her a contract.
No, I didn't mention to read it.
That's for you.
No. Yeah, I, I, you mentioned that you wanted to contact-
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, uh, have a couple of weeks to think about it, uh, review the, uh, the tape, which I have a number of times. I'm sure you guys have also.
I have not. I do not enjoy watching myself, so.
Okay. Uh, I hope you reserve, did you take a look at the paperwork submitted, the photos that we had and-
I did. I, I, I actually took the time. Very familiar with the Bliss incident, and I actually took the time to, uh, drive past, uh, the other scene last week.
Yes, I, I went up and looked at both of them also. And I went through, um, the town council. I looked, read that carefully a few times.
Well, before I give my opinion on this situation, I would rather be the last one to say anything, if you don't mind.
Well, we tabled it for you. Uh, do you want me to lead it off, or are we, are we being passionate about what's going on, or do you wanna go for it, Lynda?
No, if you, you wanna start out, then we can add.
Um, as far as I'm concerned, we'll talk about the, uh, was it Rice Corner Road?
Yeah, that's the first one.
Well, that was the last one of the answer, but I'm gonna take that one first.
Do you wanna, yeah, do you wanna-
I personally have no problem with that. Um, I drove past it. I agree with the resident in the audience that it's not an official parking spot. I could see if that snow piling was 20, 30, 40, 50 feet on the real driveway. Um, where it was, based on those pictures right by that tree, physically looking at it with the snow gone, that was not an issue for me. I, I don't see any need to, to deal with a complaint there.
I feel the same way. I went out there and I took a ride also, and as far as I'm concerned, I always considered that town property.
And the way, it's, it's very small, too.
And it's a very small area.
If they're parking there multiple cars, God bless them.
And it's dangerous on that, on that corner. Anybody can get hit on that. So I don't find any complaint on that myself.
Um, in regards to Mr. Bliss's complaint, um, I'm very disheartened that Mr. Bliss wasn't here. I think that might have spoke lines as well. With Mr. Chafee explaining that he went on the side, um, we had the discussion. I don't know if I just wanna give you, you know, Mr. Heller brought this up in, in other executive sessions. You choose to do this in open. Um, our progressive disciplinary process is very specific that we have to put things in writing. I like to just do things verbally, face to face, handshake kinda thing. I don't know if this board wants to give you a physical verbal writing, which comes with writing. My only complaint is that I would have liked to seen the snow go to the northern side of the driveway as opposed to right on top of the manlogs. That's my only issue with that. With that said, I don't know if that warrants a verbal or a written. I think it's just a recommendation. Um, in regards to the other incident, the first incident that we spoke with, um, based on the police, and, and I like Dave, and to put that on tape, I know that probably chastises me with a lot of people. I, I think Dave's a good guy. I think he works very hard. I think he does a lot for this town. I respect him. I like him. Does he do stupid things? Yes, just like everybody, we're all human. Um, I don't think you sped down the road based on the police officer's report. I personally think that you had a verbal altercation with him, or I think you did swear at him. That's my personal opinion, based on the testimony of his witness. Um, for that, I would see disciplinary actions there, and that would be based on what the board would wanna do. So that's my two cents.
I'd like to speak on, I believe too, I believe, you know, Herb, with you being, you know, you're representing the town, and, you know, and if you swear at somebody, you know, people are gonna look at, um, us, they're not gonna look at the town very, with very high standards, when our employees are out there, um, you know, swearing at, um, the residents of the community. So I just think, you know, you've gotta try to get above this and, you know, control your anger, you know, if you do get anger and control the words that you say.
That same, that same town employee that we're talking about, that I suppose they swore at, he swore at me too.
Oh, yeah, I realize. I, I agree that happened, like, you both swore and-
And they, they both, they both admit to, of a heated discussion between both.
Yeah, heated discussion. But, you know, I just think that, you know, with you working for the town and being in a supervisory position, you should try to get above this. You know, just get above it and, you know, try to keep your words into yourself because you're representing the town when you're out there, uh, with our residents. That's how I, that's how I feel.
Mr. Thummel?
Um, what about the, uh, turning on the salt machine on the, on the guys? You didn't address that at all?
I don't know where I stand on that. I, I, I think if push comes to shove, I think he did it.
Well, there was a witness.
So what's your opinion on the first two?
Well, I, uh, in my opinion, I think, uh, Mr. Holcraft's complaint was, and his testimony was credible. He spoke well. He was candid during the testimony. Uh, and eyewitness report corroborated exactly what was reported. Um, Herb, your testimony, not so much. I, in my opinion, I think you were a little disingenuous and deceptive. Uh, you had no right, first of all, you had no right to stop and engage any, in a senseless argument with any citizen for no reason. I think you did swear, and I think you did turn on the salt machine intentionally just to mess with them, according to the-
You say so.
Witness. Um, this, my opinion, that's all, you know? Um, I don't think you were very honest with, uh, I think, in my opinion, I don't think you were very honest when we were asking about the events. Uh, you denied turning on the salt machine and getting out of the vehicle, but you did. You turned on the vehicle, turned on the salt machine, and you did get out of the vehicle.
You're putting words in my mouth again.
Well, no, I'm putting words out of my mouth. I'm saying you opened the door, you stood on the, on the, on the floor of the cab, got up, reached up over the cab, and started an argument. You weren't on the ground, granted. I think that's what you were talking about, getting out of the vehicle.
For the-
Yeah, well, so, it, he's not as, he's not being as clear as he should be as a superintendent. Um, I think he was unprofessional and his actions were reprehensible to a citizen, a taxpaying citizens. Um, it's, it's, it's unbelievable. I find it just unbelievable for anyone to act that way, uh, in my opinion. Uh, on Mrs., Mr. Bliss's complaint, you went out of the way, Mr. Chafee went out of the way to remove snow across 148 and redump it across the street. Why? He said it was for safety's sake, right? Was it for safety's sake? No. A police officer's report specifically said there was no safety concern. So there was no reason to remove that snow and dump it back onto the person's property, except to be vindictive, in my opinion. So he behaved badly, basically. Um, on Mr. Hammond's complaint, I mean, there was no video. There's no eyewitnesses. Uh, but that snow didn't get there by itself, seven feet tall, 15 feet long. I mean, Mr. Hammond's saying he didn't do it. Why would he do it? It's taken up his spot.
Well, we had somebody in here earlier that said that the piles weren't that high.
I saw that. See, I had pictures. We saw pictures. When he came here, it was weeks after. That's why the pile went down, but at that time-
Oh, I understand that the piles went down.
Well, yeah, that means the piles were seven feet tall and 15 feet long. Um, I just find this, uh, unbelievable, that's all. I just really do. Uh, I think his, in my opinion, I think his behavior embarrassed himself. He embarrassed the town, and he's placing the town of Brookfield at risk. So I don't know what you wanna do. I don't know what you think for a proper discipline is.
Well, you, you seem to differ with us, so what's your-
Well, hey, no, 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 no. You're gonna take the lead on this. I'm not gonna be taking the lead on this again.
Well, what's your desire? I'd like to hear it.
Like I said, I wanna hear what you guys have to say first. Like I said, I want to hear what you guys have to say first.
If you have a written statement, then there's gotta be some.
No, no, just notes, for starters.
There's gotta be some desire of.
They're just notes. I just wanted to make sure I recapped everything. I mean, for example, when you guys were telling your side of the story, you omitted certain things that happened. I mean, seriously, I think, in my opinion, I think he really was disingenuous talking to us, and I think that's horrible. We can't have a town employee lying to the board of selectmen. We had a town employee lying to the board of selectmen last year. He was fired, or not appointed, I should say. He was suspended for thirty days. And we have a superintendent, a department head, swearing at citizens, taking snow from across the street, and dumping it on the property, not being so forthcoming in, in talking to us about it.
So, in the, in the four categories, verbal, written, suspension, or dismissal, what do you recommend?
I, like I said, I'm gonna wait to hear from you what you guys have to say.
Ms. Lincoln?
I'm not leading this charge.
Another thing I think I would like to say to Mr. Chafee, too, here, is maybe in the future, you know, when he sees things, you know, violations, you know, that people are doing, like he, when you went up there on East Main Street, and you saw him cutting down, you know, some trees that he shouldn't have been cutting down?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe instead of, you know, trying to play like, say, the enforcement officer, maybe you should start going through some different channels, you know, and get, trying to get in touch with the tree warden or somebody, and let them know what was going on.
Tree warden was notified at least a half a dozen times about that, and never returned a phone call.
So, would you like to do it?
I, I don't know what to do.
So, my recommendation is following this progressive disciplinary process as town council's recommended. There's nothing in the file. I'd like to see a verbal for Mr. Bliss, and I'd like to see a written for Mr. Holcraft.
I agree with, I agree with the verbal on Mr. Bliss, and I think a written on this one, because the swearing, I just don't think that's tolerable. We have to stop things like that.
So, the issue with assaulting the residents intentionally and lying to the board, or lying to the board of selectmen, that's not a big deal to you guys, huh? I think lying is the biggest thing, actually.
So, you recommend a suspension?
I'm not saying anything. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, yes, I can, yes, I can. Absolutely, I can.
What, what, when the police?
Mr. Chafee?
You know, I've said it before, and it's probably gonna start happening with town, the town vehicles down there. I've talked to the chief, and he's gonna take and try to walk me through it. We're gonna start putting cameras in the vehicles. That way, everything is done with cameras and everything else in the town vehicles. That way, if there's any questions, it's been recorded and everything else. I gotta go through the legal end of it and find out what I have to do with it. That way, it's not a hearsay, she says, or whatever. It'll, it'll all be recorded, and that'll be it. And it'll be done and over with. That way, as Mr. Thomal keeps saying, he keeps coming after me anyways, that way, it's not gonna happen anymore. It won't happen, this discussion, because when you look at the tapes and stuff, everything will be on tape, and the person that has the issue will be on tape, and it'll be done and over.
And Mr. Thomal, when you, when you, when you commented on an employee lying last time, we, we had it on tape. We had written testimony with a police chief.
Well, yeah, we have witnesses come forward and spoke.
But we still have a he said, she said type of situation.
Yeah, but we have witnesses, though.
I just, I think it's.
It's not a he said, he said, she said.
I think it's a little bit different, and I'm not defending him. I think Mr. Chafee swore at Mr. Holcraft, which I think is completely unacceptable.
Well, you gotta remember, that happened in town hall here not too long ago with somebody.
Well, let's, let's just stay with this situation.
I'm just.
Well, I, uh.
And that's been recorded.
Unless, unless you voice something differently, Mr. Thomal, then I'm gonna entertain a motion for the verbal for Mr. Bliss and the written for Mr. Holcraft.
You can make any motion you want.
I'll make that motion.
And I will second for discussion. Mr. Thomal, discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
One abstention. It passes?
It passes.
Then we'll fill that out for you, Mr. Chafee.
Thank you, sir.
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Are we done for the night?
Thank you, everyone. Done for the night.